It's five thirty and I call the special meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order on Monday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Culp.
Here.
Mr. Posey.
Here.
I now motion to adjourn into an executive session to consider the appointment of a public employee or official in accordance with Ohio Revised Code one-two-one dot two-two-G-one.
I second the motion.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
I have the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order on Monday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Culp.
Here.
Mr. Posey.
Here.
Chief Stegelmeyer, will you please proceed with the reading of casualties?
Good evening, Board. The following list is a list of first responder casualties for the period of October fifteenth through October the twenty-eighth of twenty twenty four. K-9 Draco from the Mount area Police Department, North Carolina, end of watch October sixteen, twenty twenty-four, and Trooper Cory S. Thompson from the Illinois State Police, end of watch October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Please join us in a moment of silence for these two first responders. Chief Stegelmeyer, you have the swearing-in of five new police officers, one new lieutenant and one new sergeant tonight.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, everybody. Everybody, thank you for stopping by this evening to help us celebrate the swearing-in of four, unfortunately only four of our officers, or not five, brand-new officers, and the promotion of two officers, one to the rank of sergeant and one to the rank of lieutenant. Before I start the program, I'd like to take just a minute and let you know that in just a few minutes, our township fiscal officer will show that come down out of the podium and administer the oath of office to the new officers. Before that takes place, I'd like to take a minute and explain the importance of what the police badge is and what it means to this profession. First of all, I'd like everybody to take notice that the police badge, there'll be issued two badges. The first badge that there'll be issued is placed upon the chest, and in no coincidence, it's above the heart. The reason why it is there is it is very important that the officers learn that they must use their heart and have compassion while being the leaders and serving the people that they protect. The second badge we issue is placed on their hat, and again, no coincidence, the hat is worn upon your head. The significance of this badge is I want my officers to use their head to make good, clear, unbiased decisions and be true servant leaders in everything that they do. I encourage each and everybody that steps in the badge of the Miami Township Police Department to always remember what the police badge means and what it represents, and to always be a true servant leader. Being a police officer is a privilege, and this is still one of the most honorable professions that is around. Mr. Posey, this is probably going to be the last time you get to hear that speech. You know, with my upcoming retirement, I know this is always one of the better things you'd like to hear when I do. I've been doing this six years now for all my new incoming people, and I think it's very important that everybody understands being a policeman is a challenge, always has been, always will be. But the badges are more than just a sign of authority. It has true meaning for what we do each and every day. So with that, let's get on with the program. If I could have my new officers step up. Officer Brayden Bishop, Officer Dustin Cologne, Tyra Nichols, Mark Zoo Gelder, Marcus, come on up. Let me start off by introducing our newest, one of our newest officers, Brayden Bishop. Brayden was hired by the Miami Township Police Department in two thousand and twenty-four and has recently just completed his field training program. I think actually he was just released Saturday by not been stated. Prior to coming to Miami Township, Brayden was employed by the Vendetta Butler School District, who is a teacher's aide and helps special needs kids in the classrooms. Brayden presently serves in the Army National Guard and enjoys attending church and working out. Brayden completed his basic law enforcement training at the Edison State Community College, and Brayden is joined here by, I'm sure, his family. How many did you bring with you tonight? Oh, Lord, the whole section, the crew's all here. Thank you for being here. Officer Dustin Cologne. Now, Dustin's kind of an anomaly. I'm calling him a new officer, but Dustin's been here about a year, and the reason why he is just now getting sworn in is scheduling and vacations and day-to-day challenges. We could not get him before the trustees, but we finally got him. We didn't forget him, chief. We didn't forget your son, okay? So Dustin Cologne, he was hired by Miami Township Police in October of twenty twenty-three. Prior to being hired by Miami Township, he spent four years working for the Green County Sheriff's Department. Dustin has served in the Army National Guard, who obtained the rank of sergeant. Thank you for your service, son. And in twenty twenty, Dustin was deployed in the Middle East with the Hundred and First Airborne Division in support of Operation Spartan Shield. Very honorable. Dustin has studied criminal justice at Tiffin University and Wright State University, and believe it or not, he's a legacy in law enforcement. For his dad is the current chief of the Franklin Police Department. Thank you, sir. And his mom is the police officer for the city of Kettering, so somebody proud of there as well. Tyra Nichols. Oh, Ty, here we go. Tyra comes from the Cincinnati area. Go Bearcats, right? Where she began her law enforcement career with the Woodlawn Police Department. Tyra has a lot of passion in law enforcement. She expressed to me that she hopes to be able to use her cybersecurity and her community engagement to help strengthen our agency, and those are some things she would like to expand on. Tyra's a good addition to us with her outgoing personality. She's in the process of her FTO program, which she is going to be completing here in the next week or so. So congratulations to you, Tyra. Marcus Zoo Gelder. Oh, Zoo. Marcus was born and raised in Dayton, and after graduating high school, Marcus enlisted in the United States Air Force. While he was in the Air Force, Marcus had two combat deployments prior to being honorably discharged. Marcus, thank you for your service. After his military service, Marcus was hired by the Goodlettsville, Tennessee Police Department. I hope I said that right. Where he spent five years, and he specialized in highway interdiction. In twenty twenty-three, Marcus returned to the Dayton area to be closer to his family and was hired by Washington Courthouse Police. Well, in twenty twenty-four, the Miami Township Police, I'm going to say recruited, but we flat stole him. I'm going to tell you that right now. We stole him from the Washington Courthouse Police and conditioned him to come to our family, and we're glad you're here, Marcus. So if I could at this point in time to have the people that will be pinning the badges on police steps forward. Nobody got stuck? I didn't hear any hours. We're good?
Okay.
Dustin.
Hey, congratulations. Glad to have you on board.
Sean, you're next, sir. Next part of the program, we get to swear in one of our new sergeant, Officer Sean Todd, soon to be sergeant. Would you please stand up? Come forward. I'd like to introduce everybody to Sean Todd. Sean began his law enforcement career in nineteen ninety-six with the Miami University Police Department. Since then, Sean has worked for the Riverside Police Department, the Clayton Police Department, Perry Township Police Department, and in two thousand and nine, he was hired by Miami Township. During his career with Miami Township, Sean has worked in patrol bureau as well as in the detective bureau. Sean is a traffic reconstructionist, an evidence technician, and is a certified police academy instructor. Sean has earned his bachelor's degree in financial services and management from the Wright State University, and Sean is...
I'm sure your wife and kids are here.
Fantastic.
Hi, Sean Todd.
Do you hear right square?
Do you hear right square?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the resolutions of Miami Township and the county of Ohio.
And the resolutions of Miami Township and the county of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of my position. Discharge the duties of my position as sergeant. As sergeant for Miami Township Police Department. For Miami Township Police Department. To help me out.
Thank you, Sean. Last but not least, sorry about that, Eric. We're going to square in a new lieutenant. Eric Woodell, will you please join me at the podium? Eric likes to be the center of attention, as you can tell. He would rather be in a hole right now, I'm pretty sure. Let me introduce everybody to Eric Woodell. Eric began working for the Miami Township Police Department in two thousand and eleven and was assigned to the patrol division. During his tenure in the patrol division, he's been an evidence technician, a field training officer, and he's our emergency vehicle instructor, operations instructor. In two thousand and twenty-one, Eric was promoted to sergeant, where he supervised our drone unit, and he was a midnight patrol supervisor, and he still maintained all the driving instructor, our emergency vehicle operating instructor program. Eric is a graduate of the Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police Supervisor Training and Education Program, otherwise known as the STEP program. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and sociology from the Ashland University, and Eric is joined here by his wife and family here. So I'm floating around here somewhere. There in the back, come on. Bethany, can you come forward? That's your turn. Your cue. Mr. Mann.
Do you hear right square? Do you hear right square? That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the resolutions of Miami Township and the county of Ohio.
And the resolutions of Miami Township and the county of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of my position as sergeant.
Discharge the duties of my position as sergeant.
For the Miami Township Police Department.
For Miami Township Police Department.
Okay, in closing, I would like to thank everybody for taking the time out of your busy days to show up. It's nice to see some of our officers come to help support their fellow officers. I'd like to offer this piece of advice to those that are just starting. If you've got a good career ahead of you, police works a lot harder than it used to be, but it's still a very good job. To the family members and loved ones, support these officers. They're going to see things and do things that nobody else in the world will ever see. They're going to have times that are going to be tough. They're going to have times that are going to be fun. They're going to have times that are going to be good. But what's going to make them whole is having the support from loved ones. Take care of each other. Thank you.
So we're going to pause the meeting right now, right, and excuse anyone that would like to go downstairs and celebrate with our new police officers and promoted police officers. for Resolution ninety, twenty twenty-four, be read in full. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
I now move to approve Resolution ninety, twenty twenty-four, a resolution to appoint a board of trustee member to a vacated seat. And whereas the position of board of trustee is currently vacant on the Miami Township Board of Trustees, and whereas the board of trustees have abided by the provision set forth in five oh three dot two-four of the Ohio Revised Code, and whereas the board of trustees has reviewed the qualifications of those interested in being appointed to the elective position of board of trustee and wish to make a decision on the appointment, and whereas the board of trustees desires to dispense with the requirement that this resolution be read on two separate days and authorizes the adoption of this resolution upon its first reading, therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees appoints Doug Barry to the position of board of trustees on expired term effective October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and be it further resolved, the appointment of Doug Barry to the position of board of trustee on expired term shall be subject to all of the legal requirements of five oh three dot two-four of the Ohio Revised Code for such appointments.
I will second the motion.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
So, Mr. Barry, will you step forward so that Bob Matthews can swear you in? Oops. Right, right. That's right. It's just muscle memory, is it?
Aye.
Aye, Doug Barry. Do you solemnly swear? Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
Will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
For Miami Township and the county of Ohio.
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 So during my comments at the end of the meeting, I'll have some additional comments about the current appointment. For now, we will move into the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? I motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I will second.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Barry.
Abstain.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
New business. Chief Stegelmeyer, you have a liquor permit.
Good evening again, Board. In your packets, I gave a application for a new liquor permit, and it's for the Big A nightclub LLC located at eighty-nine thirty-nine Kingsbridge Drive here in Miami Township. This is a D-five on premises liquor permit, and we find no reason to contest this permit, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Schwechart, you have Resolution ninety-one, twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, Board. Resolution ninety-one, twenty twenty-four is a resolution to authorize the township administrator to execute option year two of the current trash collection contract with Rumkey. This current contract is set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. We are looking at the second option year, has a four percent increase, and this wouldn't take effect until July one of twenty twenty-five and would extend to late June of twenty-six. Staff has submitted a significant amount of data that we have reviewed over the past year in the packet. A lot of it has to do with other agencies in southwest Ohio. On average, the average data that we collected that agencies are paying is around eighteen forty-five a month. Now, we are currently paying fifteen twenty-four a month, and this four percent increase would take us to fifteen eighty-five. So not a significant increase when you're looking at area agencies. Also, within this packet of data that we submitted was a recent article from the Journal News, September fifth, twenty twenty-four, and this included a contract between Rumkey and Westchester Township residents where they will be paying twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents a month, which does include recycling, but also has a quarterly fuel surplus charge. So, Board, I am recommending that we do exercise the option at the second option year, as this is a marginal increase, is a better contractual option in comparison to rates other communities are paying for their trash and recycling services. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have on this resolution.
Any questions? Mr. Stanley, you have Resolution ninety-two, twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, Board. Tonight I want to talk about Resolution ninety-two, twenty twenty-four. Upon receiving the chief's retirement notification, we started to seek an outside vendor to conduct the search for the next police chief. We had three organizations to provide proposals. This included Pracu, who recently did Miami'sburg's chief of police, the Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police, and Public Sector Search and Consulting. From that, we had virtual meetings with each of these entities to discuss their proposals and provide background information on their processes. From that, we put information together from each proposal to compare services, costs, both hidden and visible, and the timeframe for completing this process. After some follow-up questions, we have determined that public sector search and consulting was the firm that would provide the best value for our township. My memo has additional information on our process to determine the best fit in finding our next police chief. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Mr. McCord, you have Resolution ninety-three, twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, Board. Resolution ninety-three dash twenty twenty-four is an authorization to amend the appropriation for the police fund to help pay for part of the police search that Mr. Stanley just described.
Any questions? This is the portion of the meeting when this public comment portion of the meeting is when Miami Township residents are invited to share their thoughts with the board. Your comments are valued and are taken into careful consideration. The board will not engage in dialogue at this time. Presentations are limited to five minutes each. Do we have any speaker, any residents who would like to speak tonight? Seeing none, we will move into the consideration for vote, votes of resolutions and motions. I motion to approve a liquor permit for Big A nightclub LLC at eighty-nine thirty-nine Kingsbridge Drive, Miami Township, Dayton, Ohio, four five four five eight. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Barry.
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution ninety-one, twenty twenty-four, a resolution to authorize the township administrator to execute option year two of the trash collection contract with Rumkey. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Barry.
I'll abstain.
I motion to approve Resolution ninety-two, twenty twenty-four, a resolution to authorize the township administrator to engage a consultant to conduct a police chief recruitment process. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Barry.
Abstain.
I motion to approve Resolution ninety-three, twenty twenty-four, a resolution to approve an amendment to the appropriation of funds for twenty twenty-four. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Barry.
Aye. So we have three public hearings tonight. Zoning case four-three-four-one-eight, First Flight Commerce Center is the first one. I motion to, I motion that we open the public hearing for zoning case four-three-four-one-eight. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Barry.
So zoning case four-three-four-one-eight is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report. The applicant will give a presentation. All proponents and opponents will get a chance to speak. A time limit of five minutes will be placed on each speaker. Please state your name and address for the record, and when you speak, and the board will close the public hearing prior to taking final action. The board will now hear the staff report. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met, and do you have a recommendation from the Miami Township Zoning Commission?
Yes. Good evening, Board. Legal requirements for this case have been met, and I do have a recommendation from the Miami Township Zoning Commission, but first, I'll provide a little bit of case history and present the plans presented by the applicant. and present the plans presented by the applicant. So the first case is a final development plan within the airport plan development. This is within First Flight Commerce Center. This is the second building in the overall preliminary plan that was approved in 2020 along with updated development standards. Quickly, just wanted to take a look at those development standards to see what we are reviewing, the details of this plan against. First and foremost, just wanted to state, this building is being built as a speculative development building, so while we do not have a dedicated end user, this is a list of permitted uses that was approved at the time of rezoning of this property. So, again, we have that existing use that we are working with North Point Development to target, to bring into this commerce center. But then, secondly, the development standards that we're reviewing this against, building design will be reviewed against Article 27. Building signage must be Article 41, and then site design shall comply with Article 7. So generally, these are standards that a lot of plans are reviewed against. Here's a quick look at the site plan. This is a 286,000 and some change square foot building located just to the west of the existing and currently under construction building one. Here's a quick table highlighting a lot of the standards listed in the development standards, everything green, having been met. Two items there that are highlighted red, just wanted to quickly touch on those, first being parking. There are a couple of spots underneath the code required parking amount. In discussion with North Point, staff is very comfortable with this. Several parking spaces were sacrificed in exchange for parking islands with trees and additional screenage, so definitely a good exchange, especially at this scale, not really concerned about those seven spaces across 280. And then, secondly, a side yard setback, which is the east property line. This is internal to the park, so currently, it's shown is too close to the lot line. The applicant is working on replating, so they're going to scoot it further away, for really for their own benefit at an internal level. It doesn't really matter too much for us, it's internal to the park, it's not against the roadway or neighboring property, but that will be amended through a plating. Really, the most important item I wanted to really kind of highlight as part of this development plan, in the preliminary plan, direct access, a secondary access point was proposed off of Austin Boulevard. Having driven by, I'm sure, hopefully you're familiar with, this is the current construction entrance, so that's kind of whereabouts if you see trucks turning in, the construction trailer was there, it's further west of Washington Church. So this was originally proposed, in discussion with North Point, Montgomery County. It was determined that removing this access point would funnel all of the traffic through Washington Church, a signalized access point, better handled, or better capable of handling that traffic, and also will reduce trucks that are trying to do a left turn out onto Austin Boulevard at a non-signalized point. So, again, all traffic will be funneled through a signalized access, we'll remove this non-signalized point, an additional need for paving and access points across from the residential neighborhood there on Rock Castle. So again, staff is very supportive of this change, as is Montgomery County. Here's a quick look at the landscape plan. North Point has provided pretty substantial landscaping. One area I wanted to call out, it was brought up during the initial rezoning, but later in the park, there's a very significant wetland area, a pretty significant portion of the park. Our zoning code allows for a pretty generous exchange of trees for wetland area being preserved, so there's a reduction in total number of trees split across the park. But otherwise, they meet all frontage trees requirement and site trees due to the impervious surface being added. The original plan showed the frontage trees at two inch caliper DBH needed to be updated to two and a half, that has been done. And then, one second item that you'll see in the zoning commission recommendation that is sort of outstanding, but we knew what would happen, along the frontage of Austin Boulevard, as you drive out, there's a lot of existing, some of it is just scrub stuff, but there are several trees within there. Our hope is that we can find certain trees to be preserved, just to get a better start on mature trees right at the front of the park. But North Point is working through a tree survey and looking at kind of where some of the grading is going to have to happen to make sure that they're not going to have to go for one reason or another. But with an approval, approval of the zoning commission recommendation, North Point could work with staff before zoning certificates issued to make sure that we're trying to save those trees. Lighting plan, the applicant's provided details, confirmed compliance with all standards, including the 3,000 Kelvin maximum lighting color temperature. I tried to put this graphic in to try to remind the Board some of the reasons why we, you know, push this standard. The 3,000 Kelvin is a much less harsh light, significantly better for drivers being neighbored to residential areas, so on and so forth. So they are meeting those standards, have all downcast lights, and have met maximum pole and wall pack heights. Finally, I want to take a look at some of the building elevations. North Point has created certain nodes within the otherwise very long facade on the corners, and then in the center, where they tried to mirror the building, where they introduced a lot more glass than they typically would do in a lot of their other products, even down in Westchester, which is a nice facility, but again, have added brick elements, they've added a base treatment across the entire facade to try to create some more human scale design that will offset sort of the very long facade. And then also wanted to note that the glass treatment wraps the corners, so heading either direction on Austin Boulevard, you see a sort of elevated corner feature. Second thing I wanted to sort of point out, you can see the blue bubble highlighted. For building one, there was a notch, sort of that North Point added to the facade on the north, north facade of building one to try to help obscure the truck loading dock area. They have brought this feature over to building two as well, so for eastbound traffic, that building notch will hide much, if not all, of the truck visibility, so as they're parked, loading for any length of time, hopefully you won't be able to see them from Austin Boulevard. So this was sort of a last minute adjustment to building one, and it's been brought over, so we're happy that they kept that as well. Another quick look there to see sort of what that elevation would look like, but for westbound travelers, that area will be blocked by sort of the L shape formed by building two and building one. So finally, zoning commission reviewed this case, their September 10, 2024 meeting, recommended approval with some stipulations and a 3 to 0 vote, first being updates to lighting plan, the applicant has provided this. Update the landscaping plan and the frontage requirements, they have updated the plans. And finally, site tree survey to determine which trees can be preserved, and then made an effort to do that. Again, staff recommends that North Point be allowed time to provide this tree survey. I know that they have already ordered that and are working on it, so if the Board has any questions of me, I'd be happy to discuss, but otherwise, I know the applicant is here as well.
Right, the app, I guess if we have no questions for the applicant, do we have any questions for the applicant? Are there any opponents here or proponents for this zoning issue? I make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning case number 43418.
I will second.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Barry?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to open public hearing for zoning. I motion to approve Resolution 94-2024, a resolution to adopt a final development plan for Area 3 of the Airport Plan Development under zoning case 43418. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves the final development plan for Area 3 of the Airport Plan Development and adopts the zoning commission recommendations. Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Abstain.
Mr. Barry?
Aye.
I move that we open public hearing for zoning case 45, 45222, right? Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Barry?
Aye.
Zoning case 45222 is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report, the applicant will give a presentation, all proponents and opponents will get a chance to speak. Time limit of five minutes will be placed on each speaker. When you speak, please state your name and address for the record. The Board will close the public hearing prior to taking final action. The Board will now hear the staff report. Right, or not? Okay, I'm following two different versions. Okay. Mr. McConnell, have all the legal requirements for this hearing been met, and do you have a recommendation for the Miami Township Zoning Commission?
Yes, thank you, Board. The legal requirements have been met, and I do have a recommendation. If you're ready, I'll begin my staff report. Just quickly, to lead off, the applicant in this case is requesting a final development plan for a Chick-fil-A drive-through eating establishment. Building will be 4,852 square feet with 79 parking spaces. This is the location of the proposed Chick-fil-A in the Austin East Development, just north of Austin Boulevard, along 741. These are development standards that Chick-fil-A, the applicant will need to meet. Article 31 is, guides the building and design standards. The signage standards will be for Article 41, and site design will be Article 7. Again, these are the common standards that you guys are used to, except for 31, which deals with the Austin East Plan Development specifically. The building, like said, 4,852 square feet, 79 parking spaces. The drive-through is located not in the front of the building, which is one of the requirements of the Austin East Plan Development. It does meet all required setbacks for the PD, as you see there, the setbacks listed. I did want to make special note that retaining wall is shown kind of along the southwestern or southern portion of the drive-through loop, if you will, and we just wanted to give you a quick visual of what that material looks like, it's the Allen Block classic hickory, and so that is what that will look like. For ingress egress, the site will be accessed via a access drive off of the approved extension to landing way that was approved during the kind of original creation of Austin East. I wanted to give you a visual of what that ingress egress looks like, because it's not currently built, it would need to get constructed before the building itself could get a zoning certificate issued. There are some other businesses that make use of that, that will make use of this loop as well, because it will connect down to kind of the Stub Street that serves Kobe Run Apartments, Austin Springs, Austin Commons, and Storage Inn of America as well. Wanted to quickly address the landscaping, so this is where I think we did the most work with the applicant. The original submission, which you see here, was missing quite a few of the required screening trees and the both deciduous and evergreen trees. So we worked with the applicant, and we got to the revised submission, which now meets all of the deciduous tree numbers for screening. It is short by 14 evergreen trees. We'll go into the numbers the applicant provided, but essentially, the types of trees selected have a recommended distance between other trees before they could become overcrowded and unhealthy. These trees are slotted at 75% of that minimum recommended distance, and they still could not fit enough of the evergreens on site. So, working with the applicant, staff believes that they have met in spirit the requirement to screen, which is they'll provide along that north and east end a essentially solid wall of deciduous and evergreen trees. There is also, topography wise, a slope upwards from the building to that northern border. So again, combined with the topography and this density of trees, staff is confident that it will screen properly the uses to the north there. So they are 14 trees short, we still recommend it approval. Again, these are the, this is the data provided by their applicant's landscape specialist to kind of tell us why they're at maximum density with the current tree layout that they've proposed. For signage, the proposed package includes wall signs on all four sides of the building, which is allowed per Article 41. There's some images of what those signs on the actual building will look like on the building here for you. There is a limitation for the Austin East Development that only one monument ground sign is allowed for the entire development at the entrance. So Chick-fil-A does have a sign, you see the bottom left one on your screen there, which will mark their main driveway, and we consider that a wayfinding sign. You know that this driveway is the Chick-fil-A driveway, nobody's trying to figure out which one, and maybe miss it or whatever, so we're not counting that as a monument ground sign. For lighting, they've, the original lighting metrics had just a little bit too high intensity at the northern border. It was revised, and now the 0.5 foot candle maximum is not exceeded anywhere at the site border, so we're happy with lighting. This is where I think we did the most work during the zoning commission, so pedestrian connections to the site, you know, those are very important for Miami Township. They are highlighted there for you, that kind of blue line is how pedestrians would access the site. Zoning Commission wanted to make some extra effort to ensure that cyclists would make use, good use of these pedestrian pathways, so they were originally proposed at five feet in width. We've asked them to update that to six feet in width. This is conversations with Matt Lindsay at MVRPC, who's kind of their active living cyclist expert, talking with him and looking at the ODOT multimodal design guide. Six feet is the average between the constrained width of a pedestrian path with no bicyclists and a constrained width of five and seven for width bicyclists, this constrained width. So we took the average of that, talked with Matt Lindsay about it, he says that should be more than enough for a cyclist to cycle from the street and then access the site. So we believe that's met the zoning commission stipulation for a industry standard width for the cycling paths. And finally, the applicant did submit their guy, or their proposed bike rack, and it will be a hoop style with two points of contact, which is the second stipulation asked for by the zoning commission. So those have been met by the applicant since the zoning commission hearing. This is a look at the elevations of the building. As you can see, it is a nice looking building, it has base treatment along the bottom, quite a bit of spandrel and other glass, brick or brick-like material throughout the construction of the building, and also some interesting architectural features, little bump outs and cut ins, along with the canopy to kind of break up the look of the building as well. So staff was very happy with the elevations. And finally, the zoning commission recommendation, they reviewed the case on September 10, 2024, and did recommend approval with stipulations, and again, those two were adjust the width of the connections for pedestrians on the south sidewalk into the site to be wide enough to accommodate bicycles per industry standard for bicycle infrastructure and a bike rack with two point contact bike design, i.e. hoop style or equivalent. So the applicant's already submitted how they will meet those standards, so staff would like to, you know, voice this recommendation of approval as well. Do you have any questions for me?
I'm sorry? I mean, I don't know that that's a decision, I would need to look at data to determine if they're enough. I would say that Chick-fil-A runs a lot of analysis and determine for the site how many lanes they believe they would need to handle all the business. I've not, never seen a Chick-fil-A backed up, but they're pretty good about getting them through, so, yeah. Luckily, the way, oh, yes.
My name is Grace, I'm from LA, I'm on the fifth lane side of the A-Mall. I'll be applying for the stretch on if it gets pushed forward. Three lanes doesn't mean poacher, because two members crossing two lanes is not approved. And you have a couple of stopping points, so I'd like you to, if Washington Township is a special case, they're approved for that mall, so that's a whole different thing.
Thanks.
If there is a backup, where will it back up to? Because if the one in Washington Township backs up onto a major road, this is backing up onto basically a thoroughfare to get in, correct?
Yeah, this would be an entrance off of seven forty-one, so it would not back all the way up into seven forty-one, certainly. That being said, there's quite a, there's quite a loop, the way, I mean, looking at your screen here, you'd come in through the entrance, you'd turn right to get into the drive-through loop, so this is a pretty significant loop around, and there are, there's, you know, multiple parking spaces and such, that if the line got too long, I suppose, maybe it could snake inside, but there's not, I can't promise that there won't ever be a backup, I mean, we've all seen Chick-fil-As, they get busy. But, the length of the loop, combined with it not touching a major thoroughfare, with it touching kind of an access road, I think we're comfortable with the few and far between times it may back up.
Okay, the last kind of like, I called sixty-eight cars back, so you like sixty-eight cars before they would even go out onto the main area. Washington Township, they're just going to do like four hundred cars, so it would take twelve to one hour, and so that would be something a little tanking for it.
So would the one at the mall be going away, then?
It really depends on the healthiness of the mall. I do, or do my social work right now, and so a big portion of that, and a big portion of the game is based on this new restaurant. I actually feel like I'm keeping, kind of like, my work, so this location, maybe not there, but that's all I'm talking about.
Okay.
Good evening. George Flynn, Flynn Property Group, nine three seven eight Kemper Grove Lane, Loveland, Ohio, four five one four zero. And I want to thank you for your time tonight. Also want to congratulate Commissioner Berry for the new appointment. Also want to thank Alex and Max for working with us. There's been several back and forth, and we think we've complied with everything that staff has asked for, as well as your planning commission, and some of the couple of little changes that they've asked for as well. Specifically, we did work with staff concerning the number of trees and the maximum spread related to the landscape plan. McGill Smith Punchin is my engineer. He is here tonight to answer any questions, but they are registered landscape architects as well, and their help in this concluded that if we put any more trees on there, the trees will probably begin to die off. So, that's, we're at a maximum level. It has nothing to do with cost, it has to do with just the practicality of keeping the vegetation healthy, and that's, that was a decision that we came up with, and I believe staff has agreed with the decision based on the facts that, that are there. We also discussed with staff, the signage package had made revisions, we've revised the photometric plan to accommodate staff, and also bear in mind that we need to continue with it, to provide a safe environment for the employees of Chick-fil-A. That's an important consideration, and I'm sure it is for the commissioners as well. We've revised the pedestrian connections to provide the bike rack and the better connections as was requested by zoning commission as well. I want to make a couple other comments. When you, when you look at the, the rendering of the elevation, it might look like it's, it has brick and then some IFIS, that, that is all brick. So, this is all brick veneer around the, the entire building, so it's a very nice-looking building, we think, but I want to make that comment, because I know IFIS looks cheap, and this is not a cheap building that they planned to build. Also, related to the stacking, this is a very large site, it's three acres. They typically don't use three acres, they typically use a smaller site, but we've able to provide them with a three-acre site. This stacking queue was their design, and they've done this based on what the volume that they feel that they can work here. And one other comment about that is, they told me early on that this is a reliever for the Washington site, Washington Township site. That site is at capacity, and they want to build here because this is a reliever for that site. So, those are my comments. My art, my engineer is here with me tonight to answer any of your questions, and we thank you for your time.
Any questions? Could you come on up and give your name and address for the record for the, for the fiscal officer? I appreciate it.
My name is Grace Neely, and I live at eighty-seven seventy-one Wildwood Place, Springbrough, Ohio, four five zero six six.
And on behalf of many Chick-fil-A lovers in Miami Township, we appreciate you guys bringing this project forward. Not all projects receive that endorsement, by the way. All right. So I now move to close the public hearing for zoning case four five two two-two. Can I get a second? Second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution ninety-five twenty twenty-four, a resolution to adopt a final development plan under zoning case four five two two-two. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board Trustees approves the final development plan under zoning case four five two two-two and adopts the zoning commission recommendation. Can I get a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Thank you. Zoning case four six four two four, text amendment. I move that we open the public hearing for zoning case four six four two four. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Zoning case four six four two four is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report, all proponents and opponents will get a chance to speak. A time limit of five minutes will be placed on each speaker. Please state your name and address for the record. The board will close the public hearing prior to taking final action. The board will now hear the staff report. Mr. McConnell, have all the legal requirements for this hearing been met? And do you have a recommendation from the Miami Township Zoning Commission?
Thank you, Board. Yes, all legal requirements have been met, and I do have a recommendation for you. Just to begin the staff report, the purpose of our text amendment that we are proposing is to update the conditional use requirements for community-based social service facilities. To update some definitions related to these facilities and change which zoning districts they may be requested in as conditional uses. This application will contain amendments to Articles two, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen A, seventeen, eighteen, and forty-eight. That sounds like a lot. Most of those are just an update to the, the different zoning districts, like residential one and A, to show which types of social service facilities would be allowed. We'll get into it in a little bit. It's not as big as it sounds with all those numbers.
Really quick, Board, too, before Max gets into the, the bulk of the presentation, just wanted to quickly provide some context, too, on why we're bringing this forward now, and kind of how we're currently regulating this, this land use type. So, the community-oriented social service facility, it's just the way that our code essentially calls a group home. You know, this is a statewide trend right now, a lot of people are questioning, how can you regulate group homes? You know, what are we even allowed to do as a, a public agency? So, again, that's a topic, you know, countywide, Montgomery County Township Association, that was a pretty lengthy conversation topic, is, you know, how's everybody else regulating here? So, quickly, how is Miami Township currently regulating? I will say, much better than many. We have language for a conditional use today called community-oriented residential social service facility, mouthful, we're changing that a little bit, but we have an existing process. So anybody who wanted to put in a group home has to apply, go to a public hearing to the Board of Zoning Appeals, provide us general information, how much square footage per person, that you've been, you've passed housing inspections, things like that. Certain jurisdictions who are dealing with this and having sort of unregulated group homes have nothing in their code. It's, it's classified as a type of housing, so even under a single-family district, typically, they can just start the land use. So again, while we are better off than most, this text amendment is coming primarily to try to update our language to be better in sync with the language that the state of Ohio uses to regulate this land use. Group home is a huge umbrella that needs to be broken up into smaller land use types and then attributed to appropriate districts based on density and amount of square footage per person, and so on and so forth. So again, you know, Max will get into kind of how we're classifying, again, in line with the state, what type of conditions have to be presented, but again, these would all then go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a public hearing. There would be notifications to the neighborhood to make sure that people are aware, hey, there's a change in land use. Again, many communities don't have that. So we're in good shape, we're trying to move the code forward, be better in sync with Ohio, but wanted to provide that context of why now, so, anyway. Sorry, Max, sorry for jumping in.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So yeah, leading into, or, you know, continuing from that, I just wanted to quickly review which agencies we shared this language with in an effort to make sure it was the best it could be. We did reach out to the fire district. Some of our language talks about the required number of square footage and, and per unit and some things like that. We wanted to make sure the fire department had input on that and other safety issues. And then we reached out to the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services from, from which we modeled the breakdown of classifications of this use type. However, they have not responded to multiple requests for additional information or for, you know, to review the language. I know they're busy, I can't really fault them, but I do not have any additional information from them at this time. So I do want to quickly summarize a couple of pieces. Anything in these section two oh three to whatever, Article two is our definition section of the zoning resolution, so these all change definitions of different words in our code. So, again, changing the name of this from community-oriented residential social services facilities to a slightly less mouthful of community-based social service facilities. We are changing, or rather, introducing the definition of a residential reentry center currently in our code. We define a halfway house, that has some negative connotations towards it, and so we wanted to change the language to be a little bit more in line, again, with what the state of Ohio is calling these types of facilities. These are not, these residential reentry centers are not part of the community-based social service facility land use. They are a higher-intensity use that typically is about reintroducing either former prisoners or former drug addicts or alcohol addicts back into society. These aren't covered by this, but it does, it's tangential, so we wanted to change this language as well. And we also did add a definition for a single housekeeping unit. This is more and more common in zoning resolutions across the country, rather than trying to define what a family is, which I don't think we should, we don't want that heat. We can talk about a single housekeeping unit, and so this is just defining essentially everybody who had worked together to maintain a household and who had equal rights to the space in that household, is roughly the definition. That's just going to help when we're talking about groups of unrelated people that are living together in one family, or in one housekeeping unit. So, now we're getting into some of the more substantial changes. Article forty-eight is the article that currently addresses this conditional land use. So, a very quick change is changing the name all throughout the document from the former to community-based social service facility. There's a section in there that references a guide from Montgomery County, which no longer exists in that name, so we've changed it to the list of existing residential care facilities currently provided by, by Montgomery County. We've expanded the requirement, there is an existing requirement to obtain a licensure. However, what we've done now is taking our different classifications based on the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. We've basically said you need to obtain the correct type of license for the intensity level of community-based service facility that you're trying to open. And we also increased the required square footage for bedrooms, common rooms, outdoor common space. This is to deter overcrowding of communities with facilities that serve too many residents. We recognize that this is something important for our community to have, but we don't want it to enable misuse of these type of facilities, and, and having too many folks in them is one way that can, that, that, that can happen. So this is a brand-new section, section forty-eight oh four, and this is where we tried to classify the different types of facilities. So, that's, that's what this looks like here, at kind of the lowest intensity level, you have a child residential care or a child group care facility. These are facilities specific to children. Kind of your next step up is your, is a residential facility, this is your typical group home. This is where individuals perhaps with mental developmental disabilities, perhaps with behavioral disabilities, perhaps with, you know, something that affects their ability to live normally in society, or, or, these homes would provide a place for these folks to stay, maybe with some light behavioral services, but not typically any medical services that are provided in-house. That's kind of the, the line that's drawn in the sand for this classification. And then further, by class one, two, and three, just basically the number and level of challenge that the resident would face. So as you go up in class, more individuals with maybe more challenging situations to overcome, and, and that's why they're in the social service facility. And then finally, a residential, well, not finally, next in, in line in intensity would be a residential care slash assisted, assisted living facility. This is more like a nursing home that provides more regular medical care, typically would not have, like, on-staff nursing, but would often have daily nurses that came to provide more intense medical care than just like, remember to take your pills, perhaps some, you know, massaging and, and other kind of care that folks would need. And then finally, the kind of most intense use being a licensed Department of Developmental Disabilities facilities. These are for individuals that have more severe disabilities that require assistance for day-to-day living and care. And then, the rest of the changes, referencing most of the articles that I brought up in the beginning, are where the different classes or the different intensities of these facilities could be located. So, this breaks down that in, in A agricultural, it would be any except residential reentry centers, like we said, the, what was traditionally known as a halfway home, halfway house. In R one through R nine, which are all the single and multifamily typical residential zoning districts, we recommend only children or child group and that class one, lowest intensity of the group home type. We have some special restrictions in R five, R six, and R seven. These are the multifamily districts where we make it clear that in, like, a duplex-style structure, you can't have the use going on in one half and not the use going on in another half. That doesn't seem fair to tenants who may not be aware of that situation. That doesn't seem fair to tenants who may not be aware of that situation. And then finally, in the O1 and O2 office districts where this use is also currently allowed, that is where everything except child and child group facilities would be allowed. Again, the, the thought there is that we would not want children in an office park-type environment, lot more traffic, maybe even some more industrial vehicles that would be in an office-type setting. So those are our proposed changes. There is a full, there was in your packet a kind of a full breakdown of all the language, so I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys have about my summary of the language changes, but I will leave you with the zoning commission recommendation, which was a 3-0 vote to approve during their September 10, 2024 meeting. Thank you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Board.
Hold a second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Barry?
Aye.
Zoning resolution under zoning case 46424. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves, approves the text amendment to the Miami Township zoning resolution under zoning case 46424 and adopts the zoning commission recommendation. Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Barry?
Aye.
Department head comments now. Police Chief Stegelmeyer, you've had a big night.
Busy tonight. I just have two quick ones. First of all, congratulations, Mr. Barry, welcome back. Glad to have you back. And the next thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank the board for all their patience over the years of us doing these promotional and swearing-in ceremonies. I know it sometimes is time-consuming and we get a large crowd in here, but it's a real good thing for the officers, they really enjoy that, they look forward to it, and it's a very good thing to have these young officers look forward to. So I just wanted to thank you for your patience.
Absolutely. It's a lot of fun to see them, so I, I enjoy it. Public Works Director, Mr. Swickert.
Good evening, Board. I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Barry on his appointment, extend an invitation to come tour the Public Works facility and see some of the much-needed capital improvements the board has had recently. And I also don't get involved in too many final development things, but I would like to thank the staff and the board for expanding our lunch options close to Public Works. We will gladly do our part in keeping Chick-fil-A operational.
Sounds good. I should have let you speak earlier, right, while they were still here?
And for the proponent side.
Community, Community Development Director, Mr. Carlson.
Yeah, I'd like to jump in and be the third to congratulate trustee Barry. Among staff today, we were discussing, you know, I'm going to have to do a presentation for a public hearing to a new trustee, they're not going to have any idea what's going on, so having a practiced hand is exciting, so welcome and look forward to chatting with you about all things Miami Township.
Finance Director, Mr. McCord.
Good evening. Welcome back, Doug. Glad to have you back, and also wanted to just remind everybody that we're in the middle of budget season. The intent is to bring that back on November 19th for a second reading and review and hopefully approval. And I am going to work with the administration, Erica administration, to schedule a public hearing sometime between now and then to have an opportunity for the public to come in and provide input as well. So any thoughts, additions, deletions, comments, please forward them on, we'll consider it and we'll bring it all up on the 19th.
All right. Human Resources Manager, Gary Stanley, Mr. Stanley.
I'd like to piggyback off that sales and congratulate you, Mr. Barry, on your appointment with the township board. I'm sure HR will be here for any of your needs. So we'll be in contact.
Administrator, Mr. Snyder.
Again, I'd just like to congratulate all of the new officers and the sergeant and lieutenant who were involved in promotion tonight. Certainly appreciate all the time and effort that goes into bringing the new officers on board, getting through the training and the time that they, they put into getting up to speed with Miami Township, so we appreciate that. Again, congratulations to Mr. Barry, welcome back.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being willing to serve again on this board. On a final note, just for the public, we do have our Veterans Breakfast coming up on November 12th at 8:30 a.m. at the Austin Landing Hilton Garden Inn. If you or your family members are, are current or veterans, we welcome you to attend that event. Just call our office and we'll get you on there, so with that, that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. Elected officials comments, Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, welcome back, Doug. You're one of my favorite people. Hope you're, hope it works well here for you again. And just a personal comment on Chick-fil-A. I had my first Chick-fil-A sandwich at, actually it was Nuggets, at the Dayton Mall Chick-fil-A in 1972, so I'm hoping, it's had 52 years, been eating Chick-fil-A there. I kind of hope they don't close it. I still go there instead of Washington Township because it less traffic, but, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Posey?
I'd like to echo the welcome of Mr. Barry. I'm excited to work with him going in the future, and we're catching up a little bit. We've missed our third member here for a number of months, and so you jump in on those seconds was appreciated, even if it was a surprise every once in a while. Chief Stegelmeyer, again, I appreciate the opportunity to participate and witness the swearing-in as the son of a retired police officer. My father was a police officer for nearly 10 years before I was born. I didn't get to participate in this, but I'm sure it was meaningful for the friends and family in attendance, and I think an appropriate gravity of an event to, to help them commemorate and understand who they're working for and what their, what their role is in this community and the family's role. I think your, your speech is excellent every time, and like you, I get a little choked up about it. Everyone else, to the listening public that's still listening today, sometimes it doesn't sound like we ask a lot of questions, but it's mainly because the staff has done a lot of work in advance, and the materials we receive are very comprehensive. It is a well-run, well-managed township, and everything that comes before this board has been thought through with a degree of completeness that is not common in other organizations that I have participated with or known, known to exist. Miami Township's money is being well-spent and well-organized, township being well-organized. So I, again, thanks to staff for all their efforts throughout the year.
Mr. Culp, I forgot something. Chief, I really enjoy those, it's not, it's not a thing to put up with, it really adds excitement to the organization, other than just reading resolutions and stuff. It's more the people, people side, especially when we hire a new one, and even more so when somebody that's been here a long time retires, so you don't need to apologize for that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes, I concur, Mr. Barry, welcome aboard. I look forward to working with you, and I'm going to read a prepared statement.
Oh, did I not? Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm going to blame it on Mr. Matthews. He took me off my stride.
That's fine, because, you know, I've been gone for six years, but that doesn't mean I haven't been attached, and any night that I've had trouble falling asleep, I know, I always throw YouTube on, put one of those meetings up there, and be done. You know, it, it has been six years, I haven't worn a tie or a suit, I realized last week in six years since I had my last meeting, and it's so nice to come back and see a lot of familiar faces, but also excited to get to know those that I didn't have a chance to work with before. This is a great community, the board has done a fantastic job over the last six years to continue to make this a greater place to not only live and work, but also to get out and do things that, you know, with your family and friends. And I'm excited to get back in to find out on the inside what, what's been happening and what's coming in the future, you know. So to those I, I don't know yet, I look forward to getting a chance to meet you. HR, I hope you don't have too much interaction with me. You know, the, the elected officials, I'm really excited to get, get back and, and work with once again. And also, I, I miss the collaborations that I had, not only with the folks that worked here, but with our partners, our local jurisdictions that we were able to build such good relationships with over the years. So just excited to be back and get back to work and hit the ground running, and, you know, thank you all for the warm welcome.
Thank you. So once again, welcome, welcome back, Mr. Barry. I look forward to working with you. So I have a quick statement here on the appointment process. After careful consideration of all those who indicated an interest in filling the vacant position on the Board of Trustees, the board selected Doug Barry to fill the unexpired term of John Morris. Mr. Barry brings considerable knowledge of township operations and has previously been elected by the residents of Miami Township to serve in the position of trustee of Miami Township. As a business leader with extensive civic involvement in the community, Mr. Barry will be able to quickly transition into the role allowing for the seamless continuation of township business ahead of the regular, regular election for this position coming in November 2025. And I'd just like to state that there may have been, add that there may be, may have been seven or eight individuals who applied who have direct or indirect relationships with Miami Township. I certainly appreciate their application, and I encourage them to, if they feel like they're still interested in November 2025, feel free to run for the position. I wish to thank all of those who participated in this process for their commitment to Miami Township and their willingness to offer their service to the community. And I'd just like to state that this includes many members of the zoning commission, many past elected officials, business, people in the business environment around us, and so we had a very highly qualified list of individuals to consider. All right. So with that, we're going to move into our work session. We have one work session tonight, and I will now motion to enter into a work session to discuss the establishment of the township's 200th Anniversary Committee.
Hold a second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Barry?
Aye.